All right. Good evening, everybody. We'll go ahead and call to order the Wednesday, May 15th meeting for that planning commission. We'll begin with the roll call.
Commissioner Hopkins.
Here's.
Mr. Johnson.
Your.
Mr. Paul.
Resident.
Mr. Slick.
I'm over here.
All right. Next approval of the minutes, April 17th minutes. I was the only one missing, so I'll abstain from the vote, but any changes anybody would like to see to the minutes from the April 17th meeting?
I have a minor clarification.
Go for it.
Under items from the floor, it wasn't my expectation that the mayor come to every planning committee, just those which are of intense public interest and perhaps controversial ones as well, specifically for closures.
All right. Any other changes? Trevor, do you capture that one? All right. Anything else anybody saw?
Go to approve.
Second. All was in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will change. All right. Approval of tonight's agenda. Are there any changes anybody would like to make to tonight's agenda? Commissioner, is there anything? Nope.
I'm just. We want to, it looks like we have the people involved in item five, A and B. Do we want to let them get out of here or do they want to?
Also, the three and four, three and four are here too.
Oh, okay. So, everybody's here. Oh, okay.
Okay.
You could put trans last.
That's, that's the fun quick. That'll be the least. That's just a report we've noticed that. All right. So, we'll leave the agenda as is. All right. Agenda. Second. All right.
Aye.
All right. All right. We will now begin with items from the floor. This is the time when members of the public have free minutes to speak about anything that's not on tonight's agenda. Are there any members of the public in the room or in Zoom world that would like to say anything? Things that are not on tonight's agenda. Not seeing any. All right. We'll bring it back to the commission and head right into our agenda items. Agenda item number one. Trevor, you can wait.
So, this is our monthly update on the closure of the Axolotl Memorial Trail and progress to open it. So, the management team continues to work towards temporary realignment of the, well, the realignment wouldn't be temporary, but the trail that would go in this, this spring or summer would be a temporary condition until our, you know, a little bit more permanent improvements are planned and funded. So, we met since the last meeting. We met on site as well as another management team meeting and it's like public works cleared the trail and there was a site visit yesterday with the management team and RCA. I don't know, Eli, were you there?
Yeah, yeah, obviously.
Provide a little bit of update.
And so, yesterday we had the public works, Sarah Lindgren, myself, and two people from RCA from their crew. So, it was cleared down to the point where we wanted to divert the pollution towards the bottom of the trail. And, and as a result, they, they spent over an hour less, actually almost two hours, you know, so somewhere in a range of between an hour and a half and two hours. And they cleared the path towards the bottom. They didn't go all the way through because we had mentioned to them about keeping it secure at the bottom. And we were supposed to leave tomorrow, but I got an email saying that basically Susanna, who is the executive director of RCA, and Tom, who's the lead trail clearing group. Said, "I want to ensure that we're clear on our goal of brushing the trail from the top." And after visiting the site twice, we have all the information needed and will provide an estimate in the next day or so. GHB would be better suited to design the bridge to the boulder. So, on that day, we're talking about the fact that the boulder where we're supposed to have the trail meet the beach, apparently because of erosion, is further away from the shore, the shoreline. Or at least from, from, from where the trail began. Originally, they, I guess it was close to now, it's, I think they said it was like around 1998 when the trail was diverted from the prior, which is what we're seeking right now versus what the current looks. So subsequently, I guess it has moved enough that we may need a bridge. So, you're asking that GHB could design a bridge to the boulder. And then they said that we're restricted the amount of work we can perform out of the contract. So, Phil, you should proceed with the trip to the beach without us unless you want us. Unless you want to time it for when we are out brushing the trail. So, we'll try to coordinate when they're going to be coming back to brush the trail. And, and then we will, myself and Sarah and hopefully Steve Allen was able to make it yesterday because he's out of town. And then they're saying that when the bridge is designed, we'll provide estimate to build it if you, that's the email I got from them. Originally, I was planning on meeting with them tomorrow, but apparently they got all the information we need.
Okay. Any questions from commissioners or Eli or Trevor?
I'll just, I guess a real simple question is based on where you, we just reported on, are we still on schedule, you believe, to open the trail Memorial Day?
That's what I'm hoping for. We'll, we'll talk to Steve Allen when he gets back next week. And it wasn't Memorial Day, it's July.
Um, yeah, sorry. I forgot the date, but I.
Yeah, July. So, yes, we're concerned though, we're, you know, that's what we're shooting for. So, hopefully we'll find a way to, to get people safely down to the bottom.
Any questions from the public? Number two, Trevor.
So, this is similar to the Axolotl, but this is the report on the Van Wijk Trail closure. So, unfortunately, I don't have as much updates or reports. I think the council's preferred options to move the trail up slope based on comments from the up slope. Property owners have to be in the ancestral society. That's not going to be an option. At least that in such a society, if you're on tribe, we approve and the property or someone who has not approved, they have asked the ancestral society to, because their last letter, send they would consider that option. And so, I've asked them to restate their position in writing so that we have. The other thing the council requested was some additional history. Yes, the Van Wijk Trail.
Eli, anything to add on that?
No.
Have you heard tonight? No?
Yeah, because yesterday in the council meeting, I gave an update and it's the same, no change since what Trevor.
I have one clarification. So, I understand that TAS says, and the Yurok has always maintained opposition to the up slope option. Is that correct?
Well, they, so I don't think, I don't think they're, so they did pass a resolution, the tribal council. I don't think it was, it said they want the Van Wijk Trail closed.
Okay.
But that wasn't, wasn't necessarily specific to an up slope option. So, you know, we weren't sure if that would be.
Assuming that's getting clarified too, or will be.
You know, I think in, in general, and, and we talked about this a little bit today at, at a, at a different, but basically the Yurok tribe will generally defer to the TAS for issues. So, I think if the ancestral society were willing to go along with it, the tribe might consider it and vice versa.
I thought I got anything else?
Well, I, I just have one little nit, and it has to do with the first paragraph there. Where we said that in our March 20th meeting, that one of the conditions was that city staff would provide monthly updates as an agendized item at both planning commission and city council meetings. To me, but the city council meeting does not have an agenda item for it. It's part of the staff report, which is probably acceptable. I just want to make sure that either we change this to allow for that or make a new requirement.
Yeah, I can answer that. So, we have our agenda review committee, which is made up of the mayor, the mayor of Tamaulipas, myself, and we discussed the exact point. And it was suggested that I haven't in my staff report, which I did. And under consent calendar, the staff report is the first item in consent.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it. I just think in order to keep the records clear, maybe we have to change the background information. That's it.
Well, I mean, I, I do think that was your condition, and I think that that's what was discussed is that it would be, it could be on consent, that it would be its own separate agenda item.
Right. So, just to speak to that, my intent behind that requirement was that it was a specific line item. It was very clear to any member of the public that that was being discussed because we received feedback that there was concern that when there were opportunities to speak, and so in order to make it clear to the public, a single line item, agendized item is very clear. It's very difficult, rather than having to wade through your staff report and understand what may or may not be, and it was kind of intent to keep it simple. So, yeah, I picked up on that last night as well.
Okay.
Like I said, that was the condition would be an agendized section of that. So.
Yeah. I mean, procedurally, the way I see it is that I will talk with the mayor and mayor of Tamaulipas. I'll express your desire, indicate that that's what the planning commission is suggesting.
Well, it's what we conditioned the, the closure off. It's not a, it was a condition of approval. It was pretty black and white. That's my perspective. Yeah. All right. Thanks. Anything else? Members of the public comment?
Yeah, Jack. Okay. So, Jack Tuttel speaking as a resident of Trinidad. So, it's, it's undermining understanding that we didn't want people taking the Van Wijk Trail because it could be a dangerous, hazardous thing for our insurance company. Is that right, Eli?
Yeah, yeah. They, they're wants to set it closed. We have to have the sign basically.
I've been noticing members of the community that are seventy years older actually using that, that, that trail recently until we put a big block, blockade over it, maybe two weeks ago. Someone put a blockade over it. It's like a mesh right now.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Mercer Crater?
Yeah.
Oh, it was from Mercer Crater. Oh.
Right. So, you know, I go to Trinidad, had a lot, and I noticed that we have a big sign that says, "Going past this point, the city takes on no liability." I really would love to impose like a recreational trail immunity for that spot. So, people that choose to still take that path, they could still take that path. I mean, I know there's people in this room that might even be taking it currently. But if we can look at, maybe asking our insurance company, can we put a sign up for those residents that still want to continue to use that path? Because it, right now, it's still the safer path than using the busy street ahead. Just a better path. So, and I feel like we need to listen to the coastal commission's guidance on this. I mean, I know there's pushback from the, the different groups up here, but the coastal commission is pretty strong about getting this path reopened. It's the safest path to the, path to the ocean, away from busy streets. And I really feel we as a commission and group need to work for it and maybe not listen to everyone in the room do what's right for the city and the population that comes and visits on some daily basis. Thanks.
Thank you.
If I could comment on that. So, just clarifying one point and everything else that makes sense to me because as far as I'm concerned, the coastal commission body did say to pursue, you know, if it's possible to reopen it, and that was our goal. We'll, we'll be meeting again on Monday, the California Coastal Commission, local. But as far as the insurance provider, which it's a joint power association with fifty other cities, last December at the board meeting, they had an agenda item and with the resolution in that agenda item specifically stated that if the Van Wijk Trail is open without improvements, that it would not be insured.
Could be closed with a sign that says, "Walk on your own free will."
Well, the, the only way that they accepted it was what we did before, which we got the chain and says, "Trail closed." Originally, it had said, "At your own risk." So, they said that that was not sufficient. So, we can keep it the way it was, other than because of the construction, they put that fence up. That fence would be coming down. And then we could just keep the chain with the sign saying, "Trail closed."
Is there any type of enforcement if a community member comes to walk on the trail?
No. And the only other thing that they were suggesting is the former so-called tailing, canyon wall or fence and whatever that, that's wooden and actually has some nails sticking from it. And they actually, actually suggested that we sort of cut it down to the base because they were afraid that nails could hurt people. But that was like, in a way, when they said that, they were implying that if we did improvements, that that should be one of the things that we do. We do that and then whatever improvement we want.
Anything else from the commission? All right. Trevor's show continues. Trevor, you have item number three.
All right. So, this is an application, C and P, to convert an existing or a shared ownership into office space. The shed does straddle property lines. So, there will be a law partner associated with that. The project will be consistent with the city's detached living space policy, which I just realized is not attached. It would be one of these last July. So, hopefully it's a little bit familiar in terms of the process. So. This is something that, that the city has allowed over the years instead of. Attached accessory structures into additional space. In this case, it's offices, floor plan, and shell plans. And there will also be a small deck and a studio or city room as well that's included in that. The, so no, no change in the appearance of the structure other than the siding floors. I think that's about the size of the structure won't change. Oh, the commissioner's lay does own property within three hundred and sixty feet. So, there's a presumptive potential of interest from property within five hundred feet. So, I will, the commissioner's lay.
All right. I won't recuse myself. Next name, I'm invited back. Will do.
So, the project is located in the UR zone, which is the denser residential zone in the city of Trinidad. Again, the, the project is not going to change setbacks. Actually, it'll reduce them on conformance because the shed won't be straddling a property or any longer. Shed does meet setbacks as it is for residential structures. The, the, the merger of the two properties will bring it up to a pretty good sized property of fifteen thousand. Area ratio and things like that. So, those are shown. Most wear footages are shown in table one. Doesn't affect parking. Doesn't affect the, the septic system. The applicant has already gotten a permit to tie the shed into the existing septic system, which is shown on plans. A new reserve area was located on the lower parcel a few years ago as part of another project. The septic is fine. There, as part of that previous project in 2013, there was supposed to be a deed restriction recorded. City doesn't have evidence that that was done. So, that's connected. Here to either show that that was already done or, or to have that recorded at this point. Designer view findings are written in a manner to allow approval of the project. There is a trail that goes just north of, of the shed. We, this is really going to affect the aesthetics, might even improve the look of the shed for, for people walking along the trail. Prevents one issue that comes up in findings. Step recommendation is for approval. Actually, usually have some alternatives if you have concerns about the project in terms of adding conditions to address specific concerns, continuing the, the project to obtain additional information or denying the project if you feel that one or more of the findings. A condition of approval are fairly standard and include the conditions, the standard conditions from the detached living space policy as well as requirements for meeting building inspector and city engineer requirements. Building inspector did note that because it's a conversion of use, there are certain things about the structure that will have to be brought up to residential code requirements. It will be done separate building process. And a part of merger. Any questions?
Questions for Trevor from the commission?
Yeah, we noticed this block merger that's approved by city staff. Is that a recorded document that counted? Does that also like create a new legal description for the parcel?
I believe so. I'm trying to recall the last one we did, and I think it does have to be prepared by a licensed surveyor that noticed.
My other question, which I didn't see it in here, maybe Jack has the answer, is do we know when this shed was originally constructed?
Just, just. Yeah, I got just one question. On condition seven, applicant to the three periodic inspections walkthroughs. Um, I didn't think we had to do that for just an upgrade to a detached structure.
That is one of the standard policies in the detached living space. We modified it a little bit. I forget the exact wording, but just so that it's not an ounce of tongue, like not more than once per period.
That's right. Okay. Okay.
Still did modify that language, but it's still in the policy.
Okay. And that policy wasn't attached. Is, is that what you said?
Tom, ready? No. Um, I just had a couple. One, I do want to disclose I did a site visit. So, I got to go out and walk it and use that trail a great deal. There's no visual impact from there that I saw. You know, of consequence, it's, it's really quite a small building. There were a couple of questions I had or comments. Kind of a general one, Trevor. What is the new and better system we have now to track these deed restrictions in the city?
I think just better staff communication, hopefully. And we're working more closely with, with the building official. So, we have had the, we have a checklist. We did develop that maybe prior to 2013. But I think we have better staff communication.
And then is there a binder repository somewhere in the city to, to capture all these as they come in over the years? So, that way someone could walk in and go, "Hey, I need restrictions for my property. Oh, here's a binder. Look through it."
It's not in a binder per se, but so this project, each, the city keeps files by APNs. And so, this project have its own file and so someone can live there. Or it should also, it's something that should title.
Yeah, the title report. I don't know that they would.
It should show up on the title.
Yeah.
It's, yeah.
If they contact the city, right?
Well, it should be on revenue. But the title committee doesn't want to stick that deep.
And then I had just on condition number five, it looks like extension of and should be and. And then I had a, you talked about it, "It shall not be used or rented separately from the primary structure." Can you just help me understand the intent behind, "Shall not be used separately from the main structure?" I understand, obviously, rented separately, but I just didn't understand what that language is trying to do.
But I think the intent is that it's not a total independent living facility. You know, maybe used as some of the right. Not the most specific word. Because I think it could be used as an independent residence, but if it wasn't rented as such, I think that was the intent and that's the language in our policy. But yeah, you know, it's. I mean, it's really, the intent is that the space will be used as an extension. extension of our.
Anything else from the commission? Uh, Jack, as the applicant, anything you want to say or? Present or any questions for, any other questions for? Your pedal?
No, no.
Okay. Any public comments on the project? Anybody in the room or in Zoom land? Not seeing anybody rushing, so then I will bring it back to the commission for any additional discussion or entertaining motion.
Based on the application materials, information and findings included in this staff report and based on public testimony, I find that the project is consistent with the Trinidad LCP and other applicable reg- regulations, and I move to adopt the information and required design review and view protection findings in the staff report and approve the project as described in the staff report as conditioned area.
Good second up.
And just before you finish, did, did you guys get Dick Bruce's email on supporting the project? I just had that to the public record, neighbors.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. Passage unanimously forward there with Commissioner's lay using this. I didn't hear him terribly far. Give just a second.
Trevor, they, they're tearing up the road over there for the water. And, uh, you know, is there gonna be a sidewalk going along that, that north side?
Not as far as that project.
I know, but at some point it might be, right?
Maybe.
They, they might have to replace some high one there or something so they don't have to change anything around. What's the ability to have a sidewalk in? It's kind of a doing it, and they're probably going for a possible sidewalk.
Is it that, is it the pavement on the ground?
They're all exposed, yeah, because they're hooking things up. And, yeah, just a little bit of extra tile, and then it might be a lot easier in the future.
Commissioner's lay said he's on as well, so. Shut on the door. Alright, Trevor, we'll have item number four. Moving along.
Alright, so this is part of the digital 299 broadband project that you might have heard about or driven through over 29 recently. The intent is to provide better broadband service to rural and underserved areas. And so this is, this is another phase of, of that project. They're bringing the line up from 299 along 101 into Trinidad, so it's gonna come off. Or found off ramp, or the reception is not found on ramp. This is where it's coming down, and then down Main Street, Trinity and Edwards, and maybe at. Lab. Uh, this project does require a grading and post development permit due to, even though it's, it's going to be horizontal direction and drilling is how they're gonna install it. So not, I'm not big trenching, and they're gonna install it as close to the edge of the, uh, edge of the right away as possible. The, the city engineer, Josh at GHT, is still working out some details with them on the specific design and location. In addition, wanted to get the permit going because of their, their construction timeline and field periods and things like that. But this is still gonna have to go to the city council for city as. Property owner. That, I noticed, I intended to include that as a condition, but it's not, so add that as a condition. And. The, one of the things that maybe the applicant can clarify tonight for this is, um, my understanding was that third parties would be able to connect into this line to additional broadband service to the public. I, Josh wasn't sure about that, so that might be something to clarify in terms of benefits, um, people in the city, but construction won't, won't take too long. And, uh, the city engineer is, is reviewing this pretty carefully in terms of, um, you know, other city utilities, you know, protective utilities and sure the grading permit requirements are being met. There's really no design review or, or specific findings. It doesn't look at zoning or setbacks or things like that. It's more technical kind of, um, issues with it, but because it's a, it's developing and it goes out and, and crosses some, some sense of areas, the surface of soil, there's the post development permit that's required. And so it's basically conditioned on the city engineer's approval of plans. It, it does involve some ground disturbance in potentially sensitive areas. We did include a condition to contact a monitor and have a monitor on the site if doors otherwise requested, so if there doesn't feel they need to be there. Part of that happened there. Staff recommendation is, is for approval as a condition, but with the added condition that the city council, that the city council people's.
Trevor?
Yeah, we figured about a sidewalk. Along that road.
This one preclude.
Were you, the engineers aware that there's gonna be a sidewalk? Thinking about it?
Questions for Trevor?
Just, just a clarification under, on page three. And the engineering of requirements. On item eight. Following installation of conduit to contractor shelf cameras existing city gravity utilities, that is SD, what's SD?
Storm drain.
Storm drain, okay. So is the completion of this camera work included in the four or five days that they say that they were going to do the project? Or, or, or is the public going to be looking at it a longer period of time?
Um, I would guess that's probably not included in, in that.
I guess too, I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Okay. Ju- just, just so it's clear, who is responsible for, uh, obtaining a cultural monitor? Is that the contractor? Is that the city?
It's generally left up to the contractor to do.
Maybe this is a question for the agent. Are they? Are they online? Well, I, I guess it's a general question. I'm assuming that there will be no open trenches for any of this effort with the exception of the, what they call the end.
Yeah, there, there's some.
Handholds or something like that.
Yeah, there's, there's some access points, and then there's the utility boxes. Uh, vaults, there's three utility vaults. And then, um, periodic access points for the drone.
Yeah, the proposed handhole. Um, I, my, my point, I guess, is I want to make sure, even though it's not shown, or it is shown on the general underground construction details, details that show an open trench for, for building these, but they're not referenced or shown on any of the specific plans. So I imagine this is just a generic definition of what they're supposed to look like. You know, is that correct?
I don't know, Trevor, if it's appropriate for me to speak now, or if I should wait until the end, but I'm, uh, my name is Jess Alden. I'm representing Bureau at this meeting.
Yeah, uh, you have a good will, Bill. Yeah, please, go ahead, Jess.
Okay, uh, yeah, so I can confirm, we do plan to utilize horizontal directional drilling, uh, in the construction notes. We do have notes for trenching, but we would not, you know, intend to utilize trenching, and if for some reason a condition in the field, you know, required use of open cut trenching instead of horizontal directional drilling, we would need to go back to the city engineer. So we would utilize horizontal directional drilling, which, correct, it would only have ground disturbance at, uh, our bore pit locations, which would be located about every 500 to 800 feet, and based on the distance between our handholds, which are the permanent, you know, uh, not really above ground, but flush with the road, um, access faults. Those are spaced about like every 1,000 feet, so we would have one, um, bore pit location between each handhole, which would be, you know, dug up during construction. It would be sized at about three by five or six, and it would just be a point for, uh, the horizontal directional drill to come up. We would reset it, um, and then drill it to the next handhole. And that would be, you know, temporary, we would restore, um, the, if whether it's pavement, sidewalk, or, um, grass, we would restore it to a better or existing condition. And then I can also speak, uh, we do have a col-, uh, environmental contractor on boarded that we've been using for phase one, which, as I'm sure most of you know, is under construction along State Route 299. So we do have cultural monitors, biological monitors, and then when needed, which on the, for this part of the project, the CPUC has, um, initiated consultation under AB 52 with, uh, the various tribes in the area. So, uh, if requested by one of the tribes, um, we can also coordinate for any sort of tribal monitoring.
With that in mind, have you reached out to the local tribal entities?
So, uh, the CPUC on behalf as the sequel lead of the project has reached out, uh, Vera Fiber Networks has not personally reached out, um, at this point, but if the tribes reach out to the CP, respond to the CPUC's request for consultation, uh, we will reach out to them directly.
On that same point, just to clarify, our condition though, is it a, be a cultural monitor from either the UROX, JRI, or Rancheria, right? And the one they have, you have on staff just may not be from their list, so, uh, our, the project in Trinidad, you can come to one of those three.
Got it, uh, apologies, I had not seen that condition. So yes, in that case, if it is a condition of, um, the permit, then our cultural monitor, uh, and our cultural team will reach out, uh, for, from our environmental contractor will reach out to those three tribes and make sure to procure a monitor.
And, and I will say they, they did not respond to referrals or a notice. But we just know, um, based on experience that they generally would like a cultural monitor, e- even for directional drilling, so like the, the Cal Fire water line that went in, um, they, they request a cultural monitor. So, um, the intent of the condition is that you do reach out to them, and if they want someone there, you will have someone there. If they say they don't need someone there, then you don't need someone.
Great, thank you.
I had a few more questions for you, Jess. What would be the earliest start date for this realistically playing out that it would, because I know it has to go back to the council. Trevor, were you anticipating that at the second May, or more realistically the June meeting?
On the June meeting, although I understand it's pretty full. If there's a second May meeting, maybe we could get it on, on that. I think, um, I know they wanna, well, Jess can speak more, but I know they want to start Port Labor Day, um, and have to line up contractors for a period. Like that, so I think there's time for, for city council.
And I guess just to be specific, Jess, is there any chance that this would take place prior to June 14th?
Um, well, we would not begin construction until we're receiving our permit, so in that case, no, but we do have, as, uh, I mentioned, construction is ongoing for phase one, so we are flexible on timing, like Trevor said, we would like to construct before Labor Day, just as, um, we would like to utilize some of the same crews that are working on phase one and bring them to phase two without having to demobilize and then come back out. But we are flexible, we, we, if we got the permit in two weeks, we could, you know, put a plan in to have construction occur two weeks later. But we were hoping for, you know, sometime in July.
Right, okay, and the reason I ask just to be specific is, uh, June 3rd and then June 12th, there are two events of significance to the school in town that are gonna heavily utilize that street, and one of them is a graduation ceremony on the 12th in the afternoon that's outside right adjacent to the street there, so that would be poor timing to have a drill rig and traffic and that kind of stuff, so I want to make sure that that doesn't end up being a conflict.
Understood, yeah, we can be flexible.
Okay, wonderful. Uh, and then will there be a staging area for equipment? And where is that gonna be? I don't know if that was in the construction notes that we didn't see.
So, uh, our construction contractor actually has a yard in Arcata, so per my understanding, um, equipment should just be driven up from Arcata, um, every day.
Then, uh, roughly what kind of hours are you guys operating? And what, what noise is directional drilling generate for the community?
So, um, I can't speak to exact, uh, you know, decibel levels of noise, uh, as I'm not familiar, but we are using a mini HCD, so it's typically a lower, uh, level of noise disturbance. I believe, you know, along State Route 299, we are having like more of a seven to, you know, six or seven PM, depending on Caltrans's ability to provide us with, um, traffic clearance or traffic control. But, you know, we could adjust the timing of construction depending on, you know, the city's preference, but typically, I think it's typical to work eight to five.
Thanks. That's all I have. Anybody else saying?
I had a couple of questions for Trevor, I believe. Um, and maybe, maybe Jess can tell me as well regarding the, the last mile connections and potential tapping in of, of third parties into this infrastructure. And I was curious what that permitting process would look like. Would it require CDPs, where those types of things have to come before us, and people are tapping into those existing?
It would depend on what the construction holds in terms of ground disturbance. Not necessarily, it's more about physical impact. And then, you know, I don't know in terms of the city's rights of way of franchise agreements and things like that, that's not really by end of.
Yeah, but there's nothing that would preclude, you know, tapping into this stuff as far as like ordinances and LCPs. The, the concern that. Uh, we've discussed a little bit in the past, but the, um, the pipeline project on Edwards is essentially done, right? And it's ready for paving?
It's, uh, not completely done, but on Friday they are going to do a paving, but then sometime probably within the next month, I'm not sure exactly when, they'll come back and dig it up because they need to do some additional work and then they'll be paving, and then that will be the final thing.
Well, it's September, then these folks will be.
Well, the whole project was, the rest of it is, is off of West Bay. So, uh, but here it should be done in approximately a month, but I'm not 100% sure. I just hope for sure Friday they're gonna do a repaving, uh, so, so that it will be, uh, pretty close to a final paving. And, but then when they come back and they, then they'll do the final itself, so they, they want to make it a better access, especially the memorial, particularly.
Right, just, so this project will probably be removing some of that, ultimately fresh paving? Right, just so this project will probably be removing some of that relatively fresh paving, is my question.
Uh, I'm not necessarily because of the horizontal drilling, um, and it's gonna be on the, it's generally gonna be on the edge of the ride. Which in this case are outside of the pavement, most likely or right on the edge of pavement.
No, no real concerns, I was just sort of curious about the sequencing.
All right, any uh, questions, concerns, comments from the public there? If there's nothing else from the commissioners, right, or the applicant or for Trevor? Eli, please.
Uh, yes, I was gonna ask Jess regarding the uh. Question about third parties, if they can connect to the line.
Yes, so um, I can't speak on exact specifics right now, that's that's, you know, another team here at Viro, but I do know. That um, you know, this is the first step to being able to provide broadband uh, to, you know, businesses and residents and Viro. You know, across phase one is working with. Businesses, local agencies, um, higher education institutions, uh. Organizations, um, et cetera, to work together to make sure that our, you know, fiber is. In the most useful paths and that our access points, because uh, how, you know, this will work is at those. Three handhole locations and then the fourth one is technically within the Caltrans right of way. But um, Viro can provide a splice which would allow a um. Local carrier to come in and connect into our fiber and then they'll be able to provide it uh, to those businesses, residents, et cetera. Um, so we, you know, are willing and we want to work with uh, a local carrier in order to um. Locate those splice points accordingly within the city of Trinidad so that they can come in and um, provide future access.
So uh, so I am city manager and uh, you did mention like government along with state lines as educational institutions. So ideally, if we could tap into the fiber to help improve our connectivity here, that would be ideal for the town hall.
Yes, so I don't know if I'm allowed to speak to specifics, but I know we are working with another government agency, local agency um, along the route to do the same thing.
Okay, anything else? Uh, I'll bring it back to the commission. I did want to clarify, Trevor, you had mentioned a uh. A condition that you wanted to add. I just want to understand that was that it has to go to the city council next? That was that sixth condition? That would be a sixth condition.
I was going to, the grading ordinance has limits on days and hours.
Yeah, I believe it's seven AM, I think.
Well, they're they're pretty thorough.
Yeah. No, I was just curious. I mean, I imagine it would be reasonable. Living in the six thirty, six forty-five wake-up call for Edwards.
Well, I mean, Jess did basically say that they generally work eight to five, so if we have it set up as eight to five, that probably would be ideal.
And then I guess I wanted to ask Trevor and the commission about the comfortable, I'd I'd like to add a session. Uh, basically just stating that if construction timing work is to occur on June third or June twelfth. The contractor work with the elementary school principal superintendent. Uh, so as to not interfere with events on those two days and come to mutually agreeable modifications.
I, we can certainly add that. I will say that um, because of. The the way we're doing the appeal periods now, it's two weeks and then two weeks, so there's really no.
No chance.
No way, because the appeal period will still be running.
That handles that perfectly, okay. Break that down. Just Trevor's six months, okay. Nothing else? Anybody want to entertain a motion? All happy to make a motion that based on the information submitted in the application included in the staff report. And public testimony, I find out the project is consistent with the Trinidad local coastal plan and other applicable regulations, and I move to adopt information findings in the staff report. And prove the coastal development permit and grading permit for the Viro Digital two ninety-nine broadband project as described in the staff report and as conditioned therein with the addition of Trevor's sixth. Uh, condition regarding it having to go to the council for their approval as well.
A second.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Unanimous.
I just I just have one genuine question. It's not certainly for this, but just to clarify. When this line comes down Edwards, uh, I assume that a resident on Edwards cannot request tapping in or splicing into the. Uh, line that it has to be through some third party or through the city?
I believe so.
Jess, do you?
Uh, yes, uh, I believe it'll uh, that will be need to be a feature conversation with a local carrier.
Big long cable running across the street, yeah, the other streets, right? Um, all right, then we are done with that and we're on to the last items, five A and five B, Trevor.
All right. Uh, so I put these two, these um, on as the same agenda items so that you can discuss them together because they're. Um, pretty closely related. This is our first exception. Under an STR ordinance for location standards, so um, the STR ordinance. Says that you can't have an STR of sharing a property value with another STR. Um, both of these, they don't share property value with each other, but they um. So one, one sixty scenic shared property value of one fifty scenic that has almost another STR and one forty scenic shared value with one thirty scenic. So uh. Both of these, uh, I understand both of these places have been vacation rentals required to the city's. What licensing requirements, so previously vacation laws. Um, so these are, these are basically some of the. One sixty scenic goes actually to Southern Los property in in town. Yeah. Fairly large, large properties off off Scenic Drive. Um, and so I think in in areas where STRs are not. Having as much of an issue and concern, notices if you out out to neighbors um. About this, I think the the primary copy that will be effective would be one one seven. Actually, they already have a an STR by them. The the applications were submitted uh. Sorry. About the the same, at the same time, they're so close together. Uh, the exception request uses the conditional use permit findings. This is not a conditional use permit, though. It's not a, it's not a coastal development permit. It just uses those findings. Uh, to make the approval. So um, both of these are in in separate staff reports. You've got some of the application materials there. Um, the applicants have submitted some information helping to justify um, why their STRs would be. The exception should be granted for their STRs. Um, I also provided a vicinity map that kind of shows. Um, the properties and locations. Um, one question that I have separate from the exceptions is, is it the planning commission. Constructed by additional guidance on. Site plans and how detailed um, they they need to be. You get quite a, quite a variety. We could try and to. Get them to be a little bit more um, carefully drawn over the years, but but we don't have specific guidance. The STR ordinance just says they will be legible and to scale and have enough information. So uh. So if the plan is separate from the exceptions, um. Staff would like to recreate check this for people in terms of. Their site plan. So we have a little bit more consistency with this. Take back tonight as well. Uh. The the STRs, other than the exception, the the adjacency, they are consistent with the STR ordinance. We'll have to maintain their license. To the standards of. Data that are including the STR ordinance. Um. The the both of them, the the subject systems and and parking and and things like that all appear to be adequate and in order. To staff is and they they do need to have their building. Inspection. Still, uh, once they get this approval, um, they can continue process. Staff is is recommending a approval or, you know, that's. You can have a discussion on. Community character, what the neighbors have to say and things like that in terms of making your findings, but the findings are written and managed to allow approval, but as usual, you can change, change. Where is needed. Um, this in terms of the license cap numbers, this would bring the SR zone. Um, up to the seven, which is the cap. Um, and. The, it would bring a total number, but as you know, that UR zone is exactly capped. But if you last ordinance amendment, you reduce the cap in UR zone, but up the cap in the SR zone. To the, it was six, it's now seven. Um, and. The citywide cap of thirty-two, this would bring it to thirty-one.
Any questions for Trevor on the five A or five B?
Yeah, I had a question regarding the. Number of STR caps. So both of these. Houses are located in special environment zoning, but we're counting as. Urban residential, correct?
Yeah, so the the developable portion of the lots, um, are the SR portions. Um, yeah, I didn't actually look exactly on the map where those fall, but but both of these properties have both of the zoning and the intent is. The ones in SR zone. So yeah, the intent was to include properties like this in the SR cap. Language.
And then. That leaves, there would be thirty-one. The thirty-second floating one is for which zoning?
Um, well, any zone where the cap's not met. So now the cap would be met in the UR and SR zones. Um, so it could be in commercial or PD. I don't know of any houses that are purely in the SC zone.
Just like I get a little bit of clarification on the chart that we see up there. Um. And we don't have the parcel. Lot of boundary lines there, so it's a little difficult to understand, but. You mentioned that one forty scenic. Has an STR adjacent to it at one thirty, I get that. But it would seem to me that there also is, well, there is the Raven House at one fifty uh, scenic as well.
So there's, and I think it's, it's on, uh, there's a parcel map in the materials. Let's see, let's see. I believe so, the two. Um, so there is a strip of one seventy scenic that goes all the way down. You can see it better maybe on.
Okay, I see what you're talking about.
So there, so so yeah, one seventy actually separates.
The the two, that's right, yeah, okay. Okay, so. For three, let's see, one, two, three, four STRs almost in a row.
Yes.
Any else questions for Trevor?
I had a couple of questions, yeah. Um. There's been a lot of of recognition recently about how much handholding went into the the development of the STR ordinance. Like the process, I think people were generally pretty happy with the with the end results. And, you know, we got the the letter from Dick Bruce. I'm not sure if everybody saw that, it was some sort of supplements to the package. A former STR committee chair, so he supported the project and that carries some weight. I was hoping that people who are more knowledgeable about it than I am could share a little bit about the history of. The requirements of this exemption, just to ensure that we're sort of. Following the intent of the of the ordinance. Like Trevor, there might be, I mean, people, so so what's the, what's the, what what why does this exemption exist? That's my question.
I I think exactly for this reason, to be honest with you, was we recognize uh, that in some areas of the city. Because of the distance between two adjacent STRs, that it would not be. Uh, as much as a problem as it might be elsewhere in the city where, you know, you have back-to-back lots, eight thousand square foot lots, et cetera. Um, and so I I think the intent was that there may, there may be certain circumstances where. We could make an exception and. Like I said, this is probably a classic example of that. There, on the other hand, in a lot of parts of the city, I can't imagine that we could, you know, add an exception, but. Certainly here, it certainly looks like it could be accepted. Because of the distances between. The run with, I said that.
No, I, you know, it it was definitely, you know, we we talked about a. Clust clustering of STR, particularly on the ocean, I mean. Was was a big issue, but it was also recognized that there are some STRs adjacent to each other that are well managed that don't. Cause issues. And so I think, um, you know, the the planning commission wanted to minimize. That sort of clustering and and make sure that there's. Residential uses around STRs, but also allow the planning commission to consider exceptions to their. As a maybe an impact on.
Okay, uh, how many, how many parties, sorry, how many parties were noticed? Do you recall up here then? It's a big.
I mean, these are big, these are big properties, so it was not a big notice list, um, but I did do a hundred and fifty feet around each one. So one seventy definitely got a notice, or the Rancheria got a notice. Properties across scenic would have gotten a notice.
One fifty as well.
One fifty, yeah, and and they submitted, I don't know, they submitted a letter in support.
Do you recall Trevor did one eighty get a notice? Down bottom there?
Oh, that's one sixty.
One sixty, okay, yeah.
That is the, that's the.
One seventy is the end of city limits.
There's, there's no opposition. People did for us, in opinion, were supportive.
Yeah, so the neighbor, the owner at one fifty that's current, they ha- they have their second, they have an ADU that's an STR and they're rebuilding their primary residence that's next. Sixty scenic, and they submitted a license for the one sixty scenic person. They feel it would be safer having people regularly out of the house.
The rest of the STRs, are they aware of this? Is this gonna create a problem on some, which is? They they can't catch wind of it?
But I mean, I don't see why, um. I mean, in terms of the cap, the only reason, these aren't coming to you because of the cap, they're coming to you because of the adjacency. So, you know, if if this had been on. Berry Road or further up scenic, it just would have gone administratively. Kind of heard any complaints, but this is the first time we've gone through the process. We did not notice the STR managers.
Are there, are there any other pending applications for STRs in the SR zone that you're aware of?
No, uh, no. Um, the only pending application is the one that just won the lottery in UR zone.
I've got one more question if you don't mind, it's about the. I've got one more question if you don't mind, it's about the. The septic tank, or the septic system rather, for. For the Morgan property. It's a little troubling, right? There's no DPH file for it. Is there a way that that can be rectified as part of this process?
We run into that pretty regularly, and it's one of the reasons we have a septic management program, so. There are a big percentage of systems that were installed. Not necessarily without permits, but for permit record keeping, so. Anything before the mid to late seventies, when the, the health department started keeping better records. They just wouldn't have a file for the permit, and then it also means that there haven't been complaints or issues where the health department had to go out there and, you know, do any investigations, so I guess in that sense, it's. Good. But so, and that's part of what our maintenance program is for, so they have to have it inspected regularly.
So you don't, you don't have any real concerns about the condition of the BTS there?
You know, it, it's an older system, we don't know a whole lot about it, and, you know, one of the conditions on that permit is that they have the. Beachfield probe, and we don't know if it's a pit or, or lines, I think, so it's, it's a little bit of an unknown, but again, you know, with the STR. We'll have a little bit shorter inspection schedule, and. It's certainly not a clean system like that in town. Making sure it's inspected and that it's operated property, property. Should. Should alleviate, you know, potential issues and. You know, it is a system where when a property sells or if they're proposing improvements, migrant wire upgrades, but. The STR license.
All my questions, I'm happy to have some thoughts on, or questions as well, but.
If, if the septic system were to be probed and found to just be a pit, but not have lines. Would that? It's all fired.
It's been inspected and can, can pass the beach. Leach line test that been brought.
Yes. It has, thanks.
Yeah, but no, we don't require upgrades, that's not part of the STR ordinance, we just make sure that they're functioning, so you are allowed to continue to use. Systems that are on them.
I just had a. Couple thoughts, so one to your question, Trevor, as far as a site plan checklist, that kind of thing, I think that's a great idea. Sounds like it would be useful for you. I think the city inspector, the STR program manager, and you. Would probably be potentially better suited than us to decide what a site plan would look like, because I'm not the end user of that product. I might think something really neat that is unimportant and the opposite, so that would be my suggestion, just on that topic, and then be happy to offer. I don't know, people opinion or something down the road on that. And then just regarding the, the whole concept, then we'll, we'll hear from the applicants here in a second. I absolutely believe in the STRs and the benefit for everybody, property owners, the city, and I think they're a wonderful thing for this town. The adjacency restriction, from my recollection, was to prevent having. A, a continuous line of STRs, and what I'm struggling with right now is that map that shows there's going to be four in a row, and I appreciate the separation. You know, I did some Google Earth searching, and it's not hard to find in the more dense sections of town where there's only a hundred foot separation between buildings. Within town, there's a few examples of those in the denser areas, so. You know, I don't know, those are just my, my thoughts right now.
Oh, and there is a site thing, um, I'm okay, I mean, you have, have a system like that, Arcata, and I've, Arcata has, has they throw in things about, I mean, permaculture, you know, give you. How to, how to create a winner and that.
Just an editorial comment, I have three in a row. Right there.
Yeah. They were grandfathered in, but yeah, those.
Well, they're, they're, they're counted.
Yeah, so.
How was that as a, as a residence?
I, I, it's not part of this conversation.
Uh, so with that, if there's nothing else for Trevor, the applicants, I think you're both in the room, I'd like to invite you guys up, there's anything you'd like to share?
Well, one of the reasons why.
It just, I'm sorry, for the recording purposes, if you wouldn't mind, it's, I know it's a irritation to come to the microphone, but otherwise, the.
Make sure that you guys understand, you know, uh, the reason, one of the reasons, main reasons why we're pursuing this is we're gone a lot, and when we're gone. We're afraid, in, in, our neighbor Paul's, he's constructing his house currently, so it's, it's our house and their house is vacant. And so not having somebody there, it's for safety reasons. We've had a handful of situations while we've been there where vagrants come up from. The beach and pour down scenic and, and probe around and try and, you know, a couple break-ins, one person made it through the doggy door. Believe it or not, but, uh, so that's one of the issues, and there is, it's not like downtown where you have. Other neighbors keeping eyes on everything for everybody in town. This is the one, you know, it's a dead-end. Private road that we maintain, all three neighbors, and we watch out for each other. And, and that's all we have, is, you know, the rancheria can't see us and we can't see them, they have five houses over there. So they can easily watch people that come down their road, but people come down our road, we have. We have no, we have our own.
Well, the cyber law's been.
Yeah, right, but, but that was my main point, is it's a little bit different than a street or a, a block downtown where, and I think that's what the exception is all about. We're not a typical. Downtown type of neighborhood, those are bigger lots, and they're spread apart, and in one place there's a beam that separates. Your property and the one thirty property. And then between Paul and I, there's, you know, it's his house where he's going to live, but on the other side is the, uh, the STR. So it's not, it's kind of, yeah, property line wise, direct, it's four in a row, but if you went down there and you looked at each one, you'd see it's. They're spread out. But that's all it has. Any, have any questions for me?
Well, this is just a.
Yeah.
All the pan off the cuff question, is this the Roosevelt House? What's called the Roosevelt House?
That's mine, that's the other.
Oh, that's yours, okay, okay. Knew one of them was, I just couldn't figure out which one it was, thank you.
Thank you.
Basically, I understand where he's coming from, if you're away from a property such as you have. You have a lot of people who just think it's, they can just willy-willy go and show up and. Take use of your daddy or your mother, so I understand his issue about when you're away and wanting to have somebody on the property. In my case, um. I'm in the position where my husband died two years ago, and I'm in a position where. The only way I'm going to be able to keep that property is to turn it into a. Vacation rental, which it was when we purchased it, we turned it into a permanent resident, it was under Trinidad retreats under, um. CSK, or CSTAPs at that time. And we were living there, so we didn't want to do it, so basically it's like turning it back into what it was actually meant to be, it was kind of a summer, summer place. Anyway. And we are kind of isolated on for ourselves, I mean. If we don't have any really noise problems or any traffic problems or any. That was, we're not, we don't have any really strong issues going on between, I can't hear from his house and he can't hear from mine, and I certainly can't hear from one thirty. Um, and so there's, there's been. There's, and certainly you can't hear from here where, you know, where we are out there. And if you have any questions for me?
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Right, so that brings it back to commissions, any other discussion on this, thoughts?
I, I guess, in this instance, one thing, this is maybe. A project that I would. It's not a project, but in this instance. I would certainly take into account. Public comment, and particularly neighbors' comments that have heavily into account, um, and the, the letter of support from Paul. At least with the Morgans project, place, um. I, you know, he's going to be the one down there with all these short-term rentals, and he seems to be cool with it, so. I guess I.
Okay, just, just for clarification, panel has an STR on the property too, so.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I absolutely hear that, and that's, that's what I'm, I'm internally wrestling with is, you know, the, the inputs from neighbors and the safety and security concern. Those are just everywhere, you know, and is that the, the right standard for me to grant an exception, because anybody can ask for. You know, I have safety concerns in my home, I have, you know, STRs around me, we've had homes in town that have been broken into, you know, unfortunately, there's a lot of. Uh, second homes in town as well that are occupied, so the neighbors aren't necessarily always looking out, um, and then, you know, is the support of a neighbor enough to, you know, override? The intent, um, as I saw, this, that was just kind of my. Two things I continue to have in wrestle with since I started looking, it was back in last week.
I wish there was someone to make a rental. Would be places to live, you know, people would be places to live, if there is, I mean. You get a short-term rental versus a rental for a school teacher. That's what I was really wrestling with. I wish there was a way to make a rental, but, so that a school teacher has a place to live. Also, you could make a lot of money from that too, you know, just by renting out a house, but maybe not as much as a short-term one. In your, in your location. I don't know what the numbers are, but.
My expenses on that house are roughly five thousand dollars a month. I don't think a school teacher is going to be able to, um, afford that, I can't afford it. That's why I want to turn it into a short-stay rental. I mean, that's often, but it's not going to be a school teacher, it's going to be somebody who's from and out of the area that's got a lot of money, that can afford that.
Yeah.
And.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Any other discussion from the commission, and then, Trevor, just procedurally, do we need to vote on these separately, or is there a single motion, another presented?
There are two separate motions, um, yeah.
And then, I, just a editorial comment, I know you commented in here that there's various concerns of, or which one got first, whatever, I was thankful to. Interpret that as that's the city staff and the city manager's problem, decide who, if there's any issue with. Should be okay with the, with the cap, right?
If there was one clear one that came in first, then I would have presented that to you first, and said, that's, you know, if you're only going to approve one, it should be that one. Where I think in this case, they were so close that staff didn't have a clear. We couldn't clearly say, hey, if you're only going to approve one, approve this one, and that's why I.
But the theoretical math is there's room for both.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. All right, that, is there anybody interested in making a motion?
Hey, quickly ask, this is applicable to the, this is applicable to the council, correct?
It would be, so even though it's not a post-development permit plan, commission actions are.
Well, I, I, I will try to answer your question slightly. And I'll put it this way, if there was ever an opportunity to exercise the exception, I would do it here. I would not do it. Where I did it. So that's, that's just the way.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. I wish that there was a way to, because this is the first of these that we've encountered, right, and probably first anybody's encountered, that. Our rationale for granting an exception ought to be. Explicit, right, there should be no sort of mystery about why it is that we decided to, to grant an exception in this case, and I don't know if it's something that can be included in the. The text of the motion itself. But you're right, it is sort of a. I agree with you, that's the unique situation, probably does warrant an exemption. I want to make it clear why it is that we believe that in this case. Just for the sake of.
Some, some of that's included in the findings, but if you want to, I mean, if you want to be more clear, that would be where you might. Be unique in this situation. Probably, um. Find the number one is the. That the proposed use of the site intensely contemplated in a closed location will provide development that is necessary to file desirable for in the town of the neighborhood. Reasoning and support of that.
Where are you, Trevor?
Um, so there's two sets of findings, the one will be back at page fifty-three, is for the Morgan, the one. Age sixty-five.
So B one.
Or A, A.
Oh, A, I see, okay. I'll be. Going to add some additional language, or? On with what's there.
I'm thinking.
Okay.
Is nobody else first, or didn't know what we were talking here, um.
I like what we say under B one, it's, it's fairly explicit. We talk about. Distance between the STRs, I'm looking at, uh.
The only language I, I'm, I'm just thinking, I'm trying to think of a way to word something to this effect, is, for me personally, the, um. The degree of occupancy of somebody's residence does not factor in for me as, as a criteria to grant an exception. That, you know, that is. With all due respect, kind of individual circumstances, those are rife throughout the entire city limits, we have homes that are second homes, rentals, occupied some of the time, seasonal homes, so. To me, that's not, doesn't support an exception, um, so I'm trying to think of a way to incorporate language to that effect, uh, and, and kind of on the same vein, support from a neighbor is helpful. But for me, doesn't necessarily, um, you know, I, I can't. Think of really any action I've taken as a commissioner. Has been solely because of, or, you know, to that tip of scale for me, but, um, I don't know if anybody has similar thoughts or ideas on that language. Or see it someplace in here already?
Yeah, I just see it open it up a flood of exceptions.
I don't, I don't see that at all, um, no, no. I mean, the, the distances that we're talking about are literally an order of magnitude.
I understand, but.
Different.
Everybody else that has this situation is going to say, hey, they got exceptions, we won. And it's just going to, it's just going to open up, I mean, I don't have a problem with this particular exception, I really don't, but. I am concerned about if it opens up others wanting, one, everybody's going to have a similar story. But I am concerned about if it opens up others wanting one, everybody's going to have a similar story. If like, oh my God, I need to relive. And I understand, but that's my biggest concern.
Yeah, I share that concern. I would say currently, anybody can request an exception before us at any time. So everybody has that right already. Yeah. Will it potentially encourage more people to do so? Yeah. So we might have to have additional discussion. And, you know, some people might get a yes, some people might get a no, based off the circumstances. But, you know, currently elsewhere in town, there really isn't any other opportunity for currently, as the licenses go, because we're at the cap, you know, that problem.
And we're, we're, we're out of the cap, and we're doing good, you know?
And the other, my recollection, Richard or Gabe or Trevor or Eli or Tom, that's been with us longer than the other three of us. My recollection is that the feedback for the kind of close-in concerns, having them in a row, has never, we've never gotten adverse feedback from the more spread-out, larger parcel areas. It's always been in the compact, dense sections of town, right? I mean, I'm not aware of ever having heard any complaint.
Even on barrier properties are a little smaller. All in town, it's really a, it's a notion. I mean, there's, there's some, there's a couple of clusters in other places that.
I guess one, one thing, in addition to what I've mentioned earlier about the public comment, but also the, like, the physical separation, like, I don't really see these houses as even like being in a neighborhood. Like, they're sort of all down there by themselves. I've never been down there, I don't know. But I would imagine, you probably don't even know if your neighbor's there or not most of the time. And so, and that's, and these houses are designed that way. Like, they're designed to be secluded but scenic or something like that. And I think that it sort of does warrant an exception. I think what, what. What maybe what would draw a line for me is if we were at the cap and then somebody wanted an exception to the cap and to be next door to somebody. I don't know if that's, you sort of mentioned that that could be a potential possibility.
Yeah, so there are no exceptions to caps.
Okay, all right. I mean, I guess I would also say that if I were. I want to live in a neighborhood surrounded by STRs, but given that Paul seems that, that. I guess, it's like, maybe I would write a letter and support if I lived down there, but maybe I'd feel differently if I lived there also.
It is a very special space down there. It really is something to see, you know? And then being by yourself is a real deal. So, and there's a lot of traffic on scenic. So I, I'm for it.
Trevor, refresh me, licenses stay with the property owner. If it's a transfer to the family, the license does not stay, correct, in the ordinance?
Yeah, we, we limited that as much as possible. I mean, if it's a LLC, there, there are. I forget the exact language, but, but we restricted that as much as we could. And if the spouse dies, the other spouse can retain the license.
I think that was the only exception I would make.
I, it's not supposed to inherit.
As far as my desire for language, you know, I went on the record with my thoughts, so I'm comfortable with that. Is there anybody, I guess, at this point, there's no discussion, we can entertain a motion?
Based on application materials, information, findings included in the staff report, based on public testimony. And then that Morgan project is consistent with applicable regulations to adopt the information required exception findings in the staff report and prove the exception is described in the staff, staff reporting today.
All right, there's a second. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
All right, aye, aye.
Close. All right, passing unanimously. Question for 5B, the Fritz property.
455?
No, that is on.
67.
It's the same.
It's on the material, application materials. Information and findings included in the staff report are based on public testimony. A funded project is consistent with applicable regulations and a move to adopt the information required exception findings in this staff report that will actually not describe the staff report as a condition.
Give a second? Yeah, all those in favor, say aye. Aye, aye. Close. All right, passing unanimously. All right, that is 5A and B. Moving on to the agenda, we won't be offended if the applicants choose to leave at this point. We're busy. But you're welcome to stay. Fascinating stuff coming up. All right. Trying to find the rest of my agenda here.
The reason I asked about the Roosevelt House, are you familiar with?
No.
That house was a vacation home for the cousin of Franklin Roosevelt. And his. Eleanor, you're right, you're right, Eleanor, yeah. And Steens, Steve Trump, if you know Steve Trump. And some of their children used to play together. And the, one of the sons of the cousin, whose name is Ted Elliott, comes up here quite often, and he's got a beautiful winery down south. And so he's quite the character. But it's an interesting story of the house. It's kind of, I don't mean to bore you with that, but it's kind of.
It's an interesting house.
It is.
We should have planned a trip. We should have went over there.
But you can rent it. Be able to rent it.
I can.
All right, Commissioner Reports. Any commissioners have any reports they'd like to make?
I just found out that we had a sign thing set up, but the rancheria has said that they want to look at other options or that we have to look at other options. So now we're kind of looking at options for trail signage. Let you know, or at least we're, we're exploring. So just so you know, we took a step backwards.
I can't remember who made the comment last night on the council meeting, but they, the way they explained it, I would make sure you have the same information or that they had the right information, was that they had maybe a more permanent version of signage that would be less likely to be borrowed by someone that thought it would be cool to have a signpost. Does that, is your understanding, or does it, does it seem like more of a step backwards?
One of the reasons that we chose to galvanize pipe, two-inch pipe to go in, was to drown, to pound it into the ground as opposed to dig out and then pour concrete. And that would be the more permanent manner. That's because the pounding was requested by TAS. And so that's why we went this path, to explore that. But whatever, and it's, either way, and this system, that it's, it's a galvanized two-inch pipes. They're used all on highways in all through cities. And they're, that's what's, that's what's used out there. And so we were going to cover it with a piece of wood and make it more decorative, but maybe that wasn't all understood. I don't know. But we're, we're looking at options and open to input, as I understand it.
Any other commissioners? All right, Trevor, if you'd like to speak some more, you have another opportunity now.
I mean, it's, it's overwhelming right now. It's, applications continue to come in. It's, it's our. Trying to hold some off though for the moment. Send the grant funding, we just have to May 31st, that, and then the PC. So those are both big projects. We want to get as much done on those as we can. So I, and I, and I don't know, even though I haven't applied, we have the, so are we still waiting for very check? Yeah, but I'm just, so they have an application in, I'm just waiting for the check. The park submitted an application for entering the project. I don't know, I don't know if I'll be able to get any of those on the agenda with everything else.
Future agenda items? Any changes anybody wants to see? Any additions?
Did you, did you have the agreement?
Management plan?
Management plan.
Do I?
Yep.
Okay.
Great, that's coming, thank you. Yeah, it's an interesting read. I read it when I was in the trans committee. Yeah, there's a lot of.
I had read the whole thing.
Yeah.
The, the Laco report was quite interesting. Yes.
Yeah, we have two water service applications that doesn't come.
The only, was a report just popped in my brain, is the next city council meeting happening in two weeks, Gabe? May 20, May 28? For those that are interested, the initial water rate study is going to be presented by the contractor that's grant-funded. It's done that for the city. So be the first opportunity to get firsthand information and ask questions and that kind of stuff. So that'll be here. So encourage anybody with interest in that to get your information firsthand. And with that, I think we are adjourned.